She calls the city of Goldbar Council meeting for Tuesday to go over the fifth order. We stand for the flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All council people are here tonight. And we have Lisa Stutz, fellow City clerk, John Light, fellow board director in Casey. And we also have Harry A. Strike, our interim financial director. We're doing some finance stuff. Okay, I've got an amended agenda. A couple of things came up. Lee wanted to go ahead and work on the marijuana ordinance. So that was added as title seven. We've got the comprehensive plan grant in right before five o'clock. That's on here. And I rearranged it a little bit. These are old business and this is... And we've got the ATV thing because a lot of people may show up. And then the budgets. So Barry can finish that off and then we've got a bunch of other work to do. Oh, and also the employee benefit thing got cleared through staff today. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll say.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Mayor's report, all I'm going to say is we are probably going to be scheduling city council meetings every Tuesday. Doing now in December, based on previous history. We actually end up having council members, council meetings after Christmas and before New Year's to close out the budget. I want to get that cleaned up this year. So we're going to Christmas with all our business done. So I'll put up a special notice for the next Tuesday. And that also means that we have a lot of stuff on tonight. And if you don't think you're going to absorb it, we'll talk about it and then roll it over to the next Tuesday for first reading or whatever we do. Okay, that's about it. Our staff reports. Lisa?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Steve.
John?
Very good.
Steve Casey?
Just addressing theft issues around town and in-town vote. On the report that I posted back there, it shows we only had four vehicle prowls in the region, which isn't accurate. We have significantly more than that. But dispatch was coding a lot of the thefts. So it showed ten thefts and four vehicle prowls for a total of fourteen. And nearly all those were vehicle prowls. And we had several that, you know, people were calling 911, but then sticking around to file the report. So by the time a deputy got there, they were gone. So we don't really know for sure how many we had. We do have a person of interest in at least some of those vehicle prowls now. So we're making some progress. The white van that was brought up in the last council meeting, it has been the subject of emails going around Goldbar and Sultan. Driver of that van was contacted by Deputy Cook. And they had a brief discussion and he took Deputy Cook's kind advice to move on and leave Goldbar. So we had some logging arrangements prepared for him if he didn't want to do that. So just, it was criminal traffic stuff, but he moved west quite a ways. And he was about the next day. We were listening to Lake Stephens police get contacted, but he isn't here. So hopefully he's not coming back. So far we haven't seen or heard him back, so.
Okay, we have council, citizen comments now. Oh, no, we've got council comments. I keep forgetting these guys. For dear life time. And comments. Davey?
I have comments.
Okay.
I attended a meeting today of Boom City. And we talked about Boomtown. Thank you. Boom City is... Anyway, Boomtown. And one of the things that I would like to see is more Goldbar people getting involved. I was the only Goldbar person there. Kim was there. He lives in Goldbar, but he works for Sultan. And the whole point of Boomtown is to look at ways we can improve our... The whole valley. Improve the economic status, improve businesses, improve everything that we have here. And to that end, where there's going to be a meeting next Friday. And several meetings, but Cedro Woolley is probably the one that people will be going to. And we're talking about carpooling. It's a $25 cost because there's lunch and breakfast. And I'd like to have anybody that would be interested come with us and find out about it. Because there's, yes, this is what I'm talking about. It's rural towns. The book Boomtown was written by a guy from the Midwest. But he talks in there about Washington cities that have done wonderful turnaround economic growth type things. That Goldbar really needs to be there. If you're interested, talk with me. I'd love to have people, I'd love to have lots of people come. That would be great. Are you coming, Kim?
Yes, I have informed that beforehand.
You will? Well spoken. So that's my report today.
Thank you.
What day is that?
It's Friday, the 15th of November, all day long, from nine to three. It just sounds like a tremendous opportunity for us to get plugged into.
Yeah, I guess my comment is thank you, Davey, because I think that, you know, I've advocated for at least a year now that our, what we really need is to increase our revenues. And this looks like this is geared towards doing that.
To do that, we need to grow.
Right, so this is geared towards that. So I think this is a good thing to look into.
Couple of years ago, the contractor's father, who is a retired city planner, does stuff like consulting Chinese cities and stuff, came in and said, gee, Goldbar can do stuff. And he worked up a plan for Goldbar. And I'll bring that up and have it for you guys to look at.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
They took a $50,000 consultant job. He just did it for us. And he had some real easy things to do. And so I'll just have that out for the next council meeting, just to show and then you can keep on talking about it. Bob?
No comments?
No comment.
Okay, well, let's move on. We've got a lot of stuff on here tonight. And the first thing we'll do is the animal control.
Want to do a citizen?
Is what? Oh, citizen time, yes.
You may answer.
I got this email this week. The Mount Baker-Sonoma National Forest is... Back to work, I'm sorry. I'm Ted Jackson. I'm a member at the Goldbar Nature Trails. And I've been working on a lot of your economic development projects out here as it relates to recreation. But anyway, Mount Baker-Sonoma National Forest is doing a project called Sustainable Roads. And in short, what that means is they have 2,800 miles of old logging roads. And they will have a budget, thanks to Seaquest Ocean, to maintain 600 of them. So what they are looking for is feedback from our community as to which of those roads are most important. So I wanted to give you this handout and encourage members, maybe we could put it up on the block watch email. I'll send this to you, if that's okay with me? And they're going to be meeting November 13th in Everett from 5:30 to 8:00. And it's kind of a neat little session. You sit around these big maps and you'll take a felt pen and you'll draw which roads are important. And you put little dots on there to show your points of interest. And they take this data and they come up with a big map from all different cities and counties along the Mount Baker-Sonoma National Forest. For those of you that may not know, Mount Baker-Sonoma National Forest goes from Canada to Mount Rainier. It borders five counties. And 48% of it is not classified wilderness. So we're, at least its older fatter folks don't have the access in there like they used to have years ago. But we want to preserve as many roads as we can for access so that can at least go up and do those sunny drives in the picnic. And that's what I'd like to encourage you to do. Also, next summer, from what I understand, the Galena Index Road, they will begin construction unless they change that agenda. So we'll once again be able to drive from Indec, well, from Goldbar Reader Index and all the way over Jack's Pass and down into Sky Comish again. So that's going to be a wonderful experience for us. It'll also open up for a lot more camping, which will contribute to maybe some local heads and beds, but definitely to your grocery stores and gas stations. So these are some great opportunities. Thank you. Anybody else?
So they're going to rebuild the washout?
Yes. They're actually going to reroute the road. Anybody else?
So you can still get the troubles and freaks.
You should publish that if you can.
Any other citizen comments going on?
I do.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Stephen Forem. I'm the owner of Alpine Adventures in Town. And I know a lot of things are being presented about recreation in the valley. I am one of the larger recreation providers in the valley. Everybody comes to me with all this stuff after the fact. We never hear about these projects. Quite frankly, a lot of them we don't agree with. But as far as recreation goes, 90% of what you guys can do to help recreation in this valley for rafting would hurt me. You'd actually be competing against me and it serves no purpose. There's a limited amount of people that I'm allowed to run. If we want to get more recreation, we need to get the forest open up more. I'm allowed 1,700 people on the Sky Comish River a year. That's for Whitewater. Once we open up to go up above, I get another 70 people up there. But if we want more recreation in the valley, we need to start going to Mount Baker-Sonoma and everybody else and start telling them we want. Because I'm maxed out. I'm over. I get nasty letters from the Forest Service saying, don't run that many people. So basically, as a business owner, they're wanting me to turn money away. That makes you money. And even the money I do make, everything I make here, you guys don't get it. There's a destination-based sales tax and there's other restrictions on all businesses. So when we go into these, do your homework. I charge 8.6% sales tax for customers on the Sky Comish River. Goldbar's tax for retail here is what?
Eight point.
What's that?
I think it's eight point six.
Okay. But my code where I pay it, I pay it because of the destination-based sales tax law. It goes up on the South Fork or it goes into Index where I launch my boats. That is the law. So you have a business in town. I'm maxed out. Now, my customers do go and we encourage them to spend money in the valley. But we need to make some changes. You need to be arguing that you have a rafting company in town, makes hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. What do you get, Joe pennies? I mean, we bought them on it. You guys went from getting like over $8,000 in tax money to two, based on one little law. So we need more access and then we need to stand up and make sure that when I sell something in the city of Goldbar, Goldbar makes money on it.
Okay. I know how many years and how much time Ted spent on wrestling with Olympia. And so this is an Olympia thing, right? I mean, it's a state law.
No, it's not an Olympia thing. This is a people thing.
No, no, no.
If you guys want to support recreation, you need to go tell Mount Baker-Sonoma National Forest. You know this too. If you do not tell these people you want it, you won't get it. And you're going to need to tell them in a very large voice. And you're going to need to tell them that when you have a business, doing business in your town, you want the tax money for that revenue.
But Mount Baker makes that decision?
What's that?
You're not a Mount Baker.
But we're the people. If we all stand together and we start doing it and all these people start realizing what the facts are and you start presenting things to Olympia, we want the tax money. Why should you have a business doing $400,000 a year business and you don't get any of the money for it?
Okay, so you're saying that we have to adjust the same.
We have to be careful about the businesses and stuff and what we do.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to be careful. So when all these things come at you, be careful about the decisions that you make. Sometimes they're not going to make you money. You can spend a lot of money on infrastructure and then find out there's going to be no gain to it at all. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
I have some questions for you after this.
Any other citizen comments? Yes, sir.
First off, I just want to say, glad to see that you're okay, Casey.
Thanks.
I watched it go by. Just glad that you made it okay. And then for those of you who don't know me, I own right way out of repair on my way to you.
Might be still water, one out.
Yes. And it's been brought to my attention, not only from the city, but other people, that my red Ford truck is a issue. A safety issue. And I have consulted with the school bus drivers. And according to them, they don't find it an issue. But I realize that the two residents at Rico's Pizza find it an issue pulling in and out. And personally, I think that it's unrealistic. And that maybe, I mean, just maybe, it does obstruct you. So we're going to move the truck, okay? We're going to move the truck back. But I would like things like, you know, the sidewalk was a personal detriment to me. It messed up a lot of things at my house and for my business. Made it very hard to get heavy pieces of equipment in and out, which was one of my complaints. Made it hard for my children to get on their bus safely. It made it hard for my disabled father to get his oxygen and his medical supply in there because there is only one entrance for two houses and a growing business. The thing that is really starting to upset me, and not just upset me, but upset a couple of people in my community right around me that have sat and watched this time and time again. My truck is brought up and I get certified letters. But it's okay for Rico's Pizza's customers to pull up and block the whole sidewalk.
You just went blank. We needed a battery charger. Can you email that to me? That's an easy solution.
Come on, he's on the sidewalk.
Yeah. Huh, that's right down the standard stuff, isn't it? Let me see. Oh, come on. Email that sucker to me.
And it's not just one instance. I watch this four or five times a day.
Steve Casey, is that a 911 call?
That can be, absolutely.
Okay.
In my opinion, these guys have enough issues to deal with, especially with the weather turning the way that it is and accidents and, you know, just the regular stuff that goes on, you know.
Okay, but that's a sheriff's deputy problem that can be solved. I mean, that's right down their line. As well as something that's an exception.
Basically, what I'm saying is, you know, I'm tired of getting certified letters about a truck blocking safety, this, that, and the other thing, when I see this go on at least five times a day.
Well, then, we will, now that I've been notified about that, I will start the process to make sure they don't happen no more. And it is a 911 call. It is a ticketable offense.
But by the time that the deputies are able to get there, because they go to the things to do.
It depends on the time it happens during the day and what the law is. I mean, obviously I can't do it. But you need to call 911 because it'll set a pattern, okay? And if it really happens several times a day, then there will be a discussion made where someone, you know, put a taser in a revolver, not just a grin.
Okay. And the other thing is, is the showman was out and seen my issue with the parking lot.
Yeah, yep. Can I say a word here?
Yes, sir.
What I talked to Bob about is his water problem. And he told me that if we would furnish him a load of gravel to raise that elevation up, and he has a tractor that he would take care of the rest. So I told him that I would bring that up when we had a chance. If we would trade off a load of gravel.
About a week.
To get rid of his water problem by the city furnishing a load of gravel, then him furnishing the labor and the equipment to take care of the level.
Sounds like a deal.
Yeah.
Is this, what property is this on?
It's on Bob's.
No, it's not on Bob's property. It's on the easel. It's on the right plate.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on the right plate.
But I think this, if this was satisfied.
Doesn't make a difference.
If this was satisfied, Bob, I think the load of gravel would be cheap enough way out.
Simple solution. United, we have place in the budget to put it.
And then if there's a problem, of course, I have nobody to be upset with, but myself. And I don't feel that that's too much of a favorite ask for the city to...
No, I think it's quite reasonable.
So with that being said, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much. You going to email me that picture?
Yes, I'll email you that picture and I hope you got a big guest in part.
And then we get the guys who count, have a discussion if necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. What's next? Oh, okay. Animal Control Transport Night Health Day. We were going to look at approving that this time. It has still not been completed by the county. Let me pull it up. Let me find it. Here we go.
You wouldn't think we'd have so much on the agenda. If it's not completed by the council, why would we waste our time?
Okay, well, there's going to be a comment. Steve, there's a comment about animal control on there. And I'll have to go find where I put it.
Do I need to go back to the podium again?
Yes, please, so I can hear you clearly.
Give drinks, I'll try to cope for a few minutes till this time. But basically, same name, also have a house, 507 First Avenue West. So I also have a residence in town. We have a cat problem that needs to be addressed. I don't know who has them around here, but we have feral cats and we have people's cats. I know our particular house, we have four to five males. We have cat fights going on. And I live in a pretty quiet area. And the dog owners around us all have fenced yards. And the cat owners are letting their cats go. And we can't go in our garden. Basically, we're digging through cat feces. This especially applies to my wife. She works with babies. It's very deadly to babies, not too good for us. But as we see it now, if we have a cat problem, where we have cats jumping up, destroying paint on our vehicles, scratching out strings, digging under our house, tearing out insulation, peeing, doing everything, we have to go buy the trap. We have to trap the cat. We have to fight with the city of Goldbar to figure out what the rules are. And even when we show them what it said in writing, we have to get yelled at saying, we don't do that anyway. And end up with a special amending thing going here. But the bottom line is, cats are more dangerous than dogs. When pinned, they're more likely to hurt you. Their bites are more infectious, their scratches are more infectious. But our rules in this city is for the homeowner to do the job at their expense, transportation, risk and all, while we have a trained animal control person in town doing nothing.
Well, I'd like to comment.
Right.
I had feral cat. I called Posado a gutter trap. It came out and grabbed the cat and took it off. It was pretty easy. I didn't have any hassle at all.
And last year, I guess.
I got the transported ever myself and I'm now responsible for the cat.
I call Posado.
Who's that?
That's...
That's who the cat lady is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they gave me a trap. I trapped the cat and the kittens, because there was a feral cat with kittens in my garage. Thank you very much. And they came and took care of all of it. They came to the kittens and they neutered the cat and said it is a barn cat. So that's, it didn't cost me anything.
We don't have that offered up. But we got offered up with multiple different things over several trips. And one of them...
Well, suggesting there's another way to go about it.
There is another way to go about it. But going about it by having the city of Goldbar first tell us that they have a trap we could use and then telling us another story and then telling us another story. And then when we actually get documentation, find out that the documentation we have isn't correct either. It's also not a solution to the problem. Because as we read through documentation, it says that you are responsible for that cat's transport.
No, it doesn't. No, 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 no. What it says is, I'm sharing them this way.
Right.
It says that because you have an agreement with the county to transport your dogs, that your animal control field officer will do all the other duties that a normal field animal control officer will. And one of those duties in town is picking up stray trapped dogs and cats. And the thing is, is that I don't know if the cat in my yard is a domestic cat or a feral cat. Is it a neighbor's cat? It's not my job, but it's destroying my stuff. One of the field officers' duties is to be sure that the person whose cat, they try and find out whose cat it is or dog it is and incite them or give them a letter or notice. It's not my job. And I don't know if it's going to bite me. I don't know, I don't know if it's going to be nice or not. It's not my job, okay? Now, if you're going to say that you're not going to do it or your animal control field officer out here isn't going to do it because the city encouraged the cost, maybe we can talk about half and half for the citizen. If it truly isn't the community cat and the person, if nobody claims it and it has to be transported, maybe we can go have these or even make the citizen have to pay for transport. That's fine, but to be screamed at in City Hall and told, uh-uh, okay? Now, I'm okay, I would have paid for the cat to be transported if I couldn't even get that part, okay? And...
But as you said, if, well, if you know that resource.
The Posado.
If you knew it, why is our animal control person, when it's first discussed with the city, that should be an available piece of information for everybody in this city. We should all do that.
That is, but what if it was your neighbor's cat?
But that should be something, if we're not going to provide that service, can't we provide a means for the citizens to know about that service? And remove... And remove, remove the danger from the citizens having to deal with these cats? And another one on there, I meant, and I add, is that little did I dig on the city. When we hear that the animal control person allegedly is feeding feral cats at her residence, I find that reprehensible. I mean, if we're feeding cats, feral cats. I mean, we're not doing anything to solve the problem, but we're doing something to encourage the problem. That, I think that if you guys get together as a council, I think you guys can find a better way to do it. Myself personally, uh, I think the cats, the dogs are the same, I think they should both be licensed, and I think that that licensing money for cats will give us the money to support transport and helping clean up the problem. Plus, revenue. We already have somebody collecting tags, there's no difference of issuing out a cat tag as there is to a dog tag. It's revenue for the city, and it allows us to keep our cats well under control. It's not fair for a citizen to let their cat out, to get hit by cars, run up a tree, scratch a kid, kill all the birds, we find dead birds everywhere.
Okay, uh.
I'll give you a, it's over.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, have any questions?
I like that, what was it?
Posado.
The Posado.
That's what we've always used, a couple of years ago, there was.
Maybe we should put a notice in, in our office that, that.
Okay.
A phone number, you can ask the caller.
Okay, we will do that, and then we'll bring this up again. Uh, for this time of fifteen, it's gonna be quick. Uh, the, I didn't, I've not had time to work on it. I may not get time on it this year with everything else. So it's something that thinks in our building code stuff. Uh, we've got a sort of a, this is the approach we're gonna do in format, but not in a full legislative mode. And I've gotta look at it because there's some stuff in the, uh, state law that I'll look at before we finish this off. And John's worked on it, and I gotta get with him to do it. Okay, so they'll continue to roll on his old business. So, okay, next one, okay, the, uh, we've discussed, this is the wheeled all-terrain vehicle. Uh, we brought the law up to the council's attention back in February, state law that changed, uh, allowing a certain class of all-terrain vehicles to use roads at twenty-five miles an hour less. Uh, we looked into the enforcement of it, and we talked with the new lieutenant, and talked about that two council meetings back. At the last council meeting, we had a noise issue. Uh, and so this time, Lee has done a little background work into whether the, the reasons for the law is to enhance economic development. And so Lee did a bit of a research project for us in Gold Bar, so I'll shut up, leave you in a moment.
Yes, I, I took a notice around all the businesses in town. I see Mike is here, I dropped him a notice, uh, Bob's here, but, uh, most of the businesses that I talked to were, some were dead, definitely against, uh, all-terrain vehicles running up and down Highway Two. They didn't want anything to do with it. Uh, one, I had one business that was in favor of it, and, uh, the rest, some could care less, one way or the other, but I mean, didn't impress them, uh, to have them. And like I say, some were very much against it, they didn't, uh, didn't want them on Highway Two, they didn't want them in their neighborhoods. And, uh, that's what I found by taking a letter to all the businesses' people, since they are the ones that's gonna benefit from all-terrain vehicles in the city. But it wouldn't be the citizens that would benefit, they would, uh, be inconvenienced with the noise, so. That's the reason we wanted to contact the businesses, we wanted to get their input. I got their input, I invited them all to the meeting tonight, and I said, Mike, Barbara came, Steve came.
Yes.
And, uh, Bob is here, so that was.
Okay.
My, my comment on it.
All right, so a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
So what, you stated that there were laws that were opposed.
Very much so.
And the reason for opposition is?
The reason that we, we're gonna allow them is.
No, the reason, the reason for oppose. Why, why are the businesses opposed to it?
Oh, I don't know, they just both of them were opposed, I have one that was for it, a tavern operator.
Right.
They were in favor of it so they could ride it into snow, when they couldn't get back and forth to work.
Ambivalence meets law as well, because clearly, clearly, ambivalence shows there's not an economic gain. But I would still like to know why they are strong opposition, there must be reasons for that as well.
Noise.
What, what's that, this is town hall meeting for, man, okay?
The Red Door, the operator of the Red Door and the, and the trailer park, uh, said they were very much against it because they didn't want the noise.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that?
Uh-huh.
We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Something like that.
In Sultan, it was on Thursday, and, uh, some ATVs were brought in, and we already have, um, motorcycles running up and down the road and in town. And the people who brought the ATVs, I was very impressed, the ATVs were much, much, much quieter than any. They had several motorcycles there, they were much quieter than the motorcycles, the ATVs were not that much louder than my car. So people object to them because the noise, I don't, I think they're thinking of the little two-banger ATV runabout things, and, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a bigger machine that's got the muffler and all the, uh, safety equipment on it.
Well, we, we mentioned that in the letter, that they were legal, lawful, noise-wise, and all of that, but they were, they were state legal. And, uh, and like I said, the large majority of the people didn't want them. Some, some give me the reason of noise, some give me the reason they didn't, there wasn't room for them on Highway Two, they didn't want to bother with them. Grocery store, uh, person I talked to there said they, they had them coming now across the pasture at their place, and they didn't like that. So, but the thing of it is, with the ATVs, what we were concerned with was the economic help to the businesses in the community. And in order for these to happen, they have to come down Lake Creek Road, uh, to first.
Not necessarily, but they have to get to US Two from the, from the county.
Uh, US Two, the only place they can use it is inside of city limits, so they'd have to come up First Street in order to get to Highway Two. So it's concerned now if it's gonna be more of an inconvenience, since the business is not interested in it, why should the citizens?
Okay, it's time for, uh, let's get some, uh, business people comments, step up to the podium so we can hear you.
Uh, I just have a couple of things, I, I keep hearing that these businesses are against it, but I'd like to know which ones, because we weren't approached. And I have a business right here on Highway Two.
Anonymous were.
You say you went to all the businesses, but I know most of the business owners are.
Just step up here and give your opinion, okay?
I'm Chris Brown, I own the Prospector store over here, and we weren't approached. Neither were most of my friends that own businesses here, so.
The what, Prospector?
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah, you was, you were.
We just did a little survey.
We're open seven days a week.
I left a letter there, the, uh, is that, that's the taverns?
No, no, they're for, I talked to them, the gas station is for it, the espresso stands, the grocery store. Most of the businesses that I know here are all for it, so I'm not sure where you're getting everyone's right information.
The ones I talked to wasn't for it.
Well. Okay, well.
That's not the case.
There's more deep, we're not gonna do anything tonight about it, we're just still collecting information.
And I, uh, if I didn't talk to Prospector personally, I left a, there were some that I couldn't get in, the doors wasn't open or something.
And we're, all day, we, all day, I, I get my information through Joe and Linda from Polaris and.
There's two prospectors, ones mining and ones that travel.
Yep, yep. So, yeah, I, I think that that might be mistaken about the business owners, because we're all for it, we've been fighting this all around the valley for a long time.
He got, he got, you always hear some different answers.
I've seen what this has done to other towns, and it's fantastic, it's great. Uh, it's, you know, they're so much harder than a motorcycle, so.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get the opinion of, of the people.
Yeah.
Majority of the people are for it, majority of the people don't.
Yeah, we're for it, so you know, okay.
Thank you. Uh, next business person to work is, uh, Bobby Stillwater.
Hi, okay, the issue with the quads, I, I, I'm wondering also, does it apply to snowmobiles?
No. Let me give you a quick deal, this is called a wheeled all-terrain vehicle. And what it is, it's a roadworthy ATV or UTV. And it's, I saw two general classes, you got the ATV, that's the thing with the handlebars, sort of like a motorcycle, tip, cap, forward, okay, as much as I know. And it's, was less than a hundred seat than the motorcycles that were there, okay? Then there's the UTV, which is the two-seater, the bigger thing.
Yeah, like a Rhino side-by-side.
Yeah, side-by-side, and it's, reminds me of a World War II Jeep, I mean, it's a car, it just didn't have a roof on it. And it's about as, uh, it, it's pretty much, meets all the criteria, about as quiet as a car. So there were two types of, and if those were the only things being considered, I don't think anybody'd even notice.
My, 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 my question is, is if we're opening it to where ATVs and like Rhino side-by-sides can be driven down the road.
Yeah.
Why not sleds? I mean, where I'm from, I, I was born and raised in Montana and Wyoming. If you don't have a sled, you ain't going nowhere.
Rochester, New York, same way, uh, because the law was written specifically for those vehicles. Where there was a state law passed, and that's what we're talking about. And if you think snowmobiles wanna get in the road, Olympia's that way, that's all I can say. Takes you about two years spending your summers all in Olympia.
Okay, well.
Five hundred of your friends with you.
I, I know that we would really, really like to see ATVs and side-by-sides, it'd be, you know, as an auto repair business, we work on those as well.
Okay.
And the only thing, you know, like, uh, the grocery store saying that, you know, they're, they're riding through their grass, well, that would be a ticketable offense, because you can't.
It'd be a trespass.
Well, it'd be, it'd be just like considered reckless driving, because you have to keep it on the pavement, even though it's an all-terrain vehicle.
Well, what they're driving.
Still have to abide all safety laws, stop, stop sign.
They, those, those ATVs are not, do not meet the law, okay? That's an unconfigured ATV that's being driven that way. Uh, the guy at the grocery store, they also get golf carts coming in and all sorts of missing, I guess, stuff during the summer.
I saw a lawnmower going down the road.
Okay, and the electric wheelchairs are driving up and down the city roads all the time.
Because I mean, like, you're in Wyoming, if, if you're allowed, you can ride your ATV down the highway.
Okay, uh, Bobby, wait a second, if you go to Eastern Washington.
Mm-hmm.
They got the same attitude, they're arguing with the state that ATVs all be able to ruin everywhere, state says, no, just thirty-five miles an hour.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is maybe define the rules in which they, that the ATVs and the side-by-sides would be.
We don't get to define those rules, that has to be a rule.
They're already set.
They're a rule, that's just been done.
Well, then, if, if that's the case, then, like, them riding through.
We have the option of allowing them to use Gold Bar roads, specific roads.
No, I mean, like, going through, cutting through the grass to.
That has nothing to do with this law.
Well, they, you just said that it was one of the store's complaints.
I, they didn't complain to me, they complained to Lee.
Lee, the, the.
That, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, we're talking about coming up First Street and up and down Highway Two.
Mm-hmm.
I will, there's a possible use of Pickle Farm Road, too. So it's not, it's not hard fact, I mean, the first thing we saw was Lake Creek Road, First Street, okay? Uh, obvious, it's out of the way, uh, and there may be some, a, a different.
Well, no, I, I just talked about First Street, because that's what we talked about here, the city considers it.
It's recreation.
That's correct, in US Two, if you're gonna get economic gain out of this thing, you're gonna be using US Two, uh, I, I think. But then that's, that's why we're doing this, giving this information out, okay, Bobby, thank you, let's go, next? So basically, is this pencil call?
So for the ORVs to get here now from Reader Road, these ORVs would actually need to go back down by the Wallace and come around and come back up First Street, correct?
Uh, yes, right now, yeah.
The gentleman, the people that I see driving by the highway with ORVs, these guys are coming up with some pretty nice forty thousand dollar diesel rigs with really nice trailers hauling their toys, and they have motor homes, they're pulling all their stuff, they stop here. We have a lot of places where vehicles can pull in and out, get fuel, both gas stations, uh, I have a bus with a trailer and I'm, what, seventy feet? I have no problem maneuvering around the city at all, uh, I can get to the restaurants anyplace I wanna go. These people are coming up in similar rigs, they're heading up to Reader to go do their thing, they're prepared, uh, they come up like they're going camping. Uh, we're gonna get an increase in business if somebody forgot something somewhere. But these guys, just doesn't appear to be, we make any money back on a guy that's so well-prepared that he's gonna run his quad down into town to go get an extra can of fuel. Sounds like the guys are more likely to send a rig down with a whole bunch of cans, we're still gonna make money, it, it didn't cost us anything. If we have to do a bunch of signs on roads and mark things, it's gonna cost the city of Gold Bar a bunch of money, from what I hear, we really don't have. Do we, what do we, what do we really gain back? I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like a lot of bills, and I just really don't see where it really puts any money right back in our pocket. And if we do drive them around, we're asking these guys to go way out of their way, uh, we're asking for a lot of misunderstandings of the law, an increase in law enforcement, there's a lot of guys don't want anything on the road, uh, if a guy goes buying a minibike, they're gonna call up and explain. If there's a law in place, I think we might get more of those phone calls. Uh, I'd like to see the law go through, I think we can sit back and wait for free and learn some lessons, see what happens. Just because this law got passed does not mean that everybody's gonna be wanting to drive on our roads all of a sudden.
Okay.
I don't see a problem with waiting and seeing for free and then making adjustments later.
That's what we've been doing.
And it sounds like that's the proper course to go.
Okay.
But I, I do own a business, and, you know, if somebody wants to bring it to me on how this makes money for our community, I'm definitely willing to listen. But all the meetings that we're hearing about, I know Prospector, he's got it, we're not at these meetings. If we're gonna do things to help our businesses, don't you think that some of the business owners here would tell you that we knew what was going on before today?
Steve, this has been done through the Chamber of Commerce, it's been going on for about three years, it's been advertised, it's been in the paper, I'm sorry.
Did you ever think that there might be some reason why a lot of businesses are not members of the chamber? We're tired of them telling us they're actually injurious to our business at times, if I have to compete with the counties or cities' money for advertising, it hurts my business.
Okay.
So when I go in with them and I link with them, they actually hurt my business.
The point was, this has been highly advertised.
Okay, well, but it's not advertising point of actually having the business owners having attended or been invited to these meetings. Otherwise, some of us here would be telling me we were invited, we were there.
Is there another business owner going along with Fly Street, yes, ma'am?
I'm just speaking, I'll leave you.
Linda Driscoll, my husband and I own Premier Polaris in Monroe, on two-two Charles Street. I am a member of the Sky Valley Chamber of Commerce, I'm a member of the PortaPass Recreation Based Innovative Partnership Zone, and I support this, so, worked real hard on it for three years. Open it up, let's go.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, come on over there.
One trouble, okay. Okay, I'm Mike Moore, one oh three Croft. You know, I've been thinking about this thing, and I can't see really where it would help my business at all.
Okay.
However, uh, you talk about they're afraid they're too noisy. Hey, um, I live on the busiest street in town, First and Highway Two. And between the motorcycles and the thumping radios. They haven't made a motorcycle that'll wake you up like that thumping radio does. When people are over there getting gas in the middle of the night with their doors open and the thumping radio go on that. I'm afraid they're gonna see me on TV sometime, because I get a little upset. I'm afraid they're gonna see me on TV sometime, because I get a little upset. But anyway, as far as, um, those ATVs, uh, I don't see what harm they do really, but I can't see what good they do either, really.
Okay, thank you very much. A question about ATV noise versus motorcycle noise. My wife had a vacation in Westbrook, uh, last year. And they were having this big argument about letting ATVs come into town. And people were saying, oh, the noise, oh, the noise. And someone said, you love it when Harleys come into town. And the discussion started with that, so. Any more comments? Deb, okay?
Arguing like for the three men. I can wait for three men.
Well, no, uh, any more?
I just have.
Okay, Bobby, stand up and speak loudly.
Uh, I just wanted to comment. It's, it's not just for the people that come in to visit Gold Bar to ride ATVs. I can tell you this much. I would really love to hop on my Honda and run down to the, to the grocery store. And you know what? I can spend thirty dollars in my Honda and drive it for two months of going anywhere in this town, all over this town. And I can jump in my truck and I drive a tow truck. It's got a four fifty-four, twenty bucks, and I made it from index to here and back, or not index, but, uh.
Sultan.
Not, not even Sultan, uh, startup and back. So, I mean, I would rather ride my quad. It doesn't do any, uh, environmental impact because it burns cleaner than a car. It's a lot safer than a car. I can get out of people's way before they do something crazy. And what's it gonna do to the road? Nothing. Cars, you're driving a, a, a ten thousand pound car and it tears the highway up. You drive a three hundred pound ATV, but don't even know you're there.
Okay, thank you.
Make more money off your vehicle burning more fuel and burning up tires.
Um, I wanted to, I wanted to share with the council and one of the stuff over. Um, these are a list of economic development studies that you can find on this website. And I would encourage you, I got about fourteen of them listed down here. I encourage you to go to this website and you can click on the, uh, attachments there and just read the executive summary of each of these economic development studies. And they're all related to what this recreation activity does in these communities in terms of economic stimulus. I mean, you know, you can start there with Florida number eleven. You know, it brings in forty-seven point eight seven million dollars a year. And that's just one trail system. And Arizona brings in four point two five billion dollars a year in economic stimulus. So there, there's, there's a lot of significance to this. It's not just a, a little hop on the thing and go. It's, it's the money that's invested to purchase these machines. They cost anywhere from seven thousand to twenty thousand in the range. That is huge tax revenue going into the state coffers, of which all our cities fleet Olympia to fund their maintenance projects, their water systems, their sewer systems, and their road upgrades. So it's not just what is being paid for in gas at your local gas station. It's a big, big picture. I encourage you to, to go to that website, take a look at those, read those executive summaries, and you'll actually start getting some creative ideas. Uh, with regards to technology, the, uh, electric vehicle technology is huge. Um, many of these side-by-sites you can get that are electric, so you don't even have a gas any issue. I just discovered that Flarus makes an electric ATV. Got me curious. I don't live in Europe. But that doesn't mean we can't explore that technology. I know we have an EV business here in town. Wow, what a great Innovative Partnership Zone opportunity for that individual to figure out how to make a, a power cell that can go in and, and drive those electric motors and, uh, patent it and create manufacturing jobs in the diamond forest, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, I guess we need to, unless there's some really people thing to say, we need to move on. We got a lot of stuff. Steve, one last comment. You got thirty seconds.
The one thing I said earlier, I really would like you to pay close attention to. Most of the lands that a lot of these activities need to be done on are owned by the Department of Natural Resources in Mountain Baker, Mount Palm Springs National Forest. Uh, we, we all know the difficulties Reader, Pitt has had. Please do your homework very carefully, because you, you might be spending the money on something that could be shut down in other legislation. If we spend a bunch of money bringing stuff up here and that's not a secure money in the bank, we, we just spent money that a lot of us don't think is gonna make money. Do your homework carefully, please.
Thank you very much. Yes, Susan?
Is Pickle Farm Road a county road or a city road?
It's city partway and county partway.
And May Creek.
May Creek is city partway and county partway.
So it's my understanding that county isn't even considering allowing these vehicles on that road.
I have no idea.
So it's kind of a new point, isn't it? If they can't get from there to here, why are we wasting our time?
Uh, because we put this on as a study issue and it was of interest to people who came up and that's why we do it.
And also you need to be talking to the citizens in town, not just the business owners.
They have also given their opinion too. Okay?
I have, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I may. Um, somebody asked about, uh, well, let's wait and see what everybody else is gonna do, and you suggested that we are.
Yeah.
And we are. And here I have Sultan's, uh, proposed ordinance right now. And some, there's some interesting things, uh, in this and for this. For the sake of those who are concerned, you know, it has to have a headlamp, gotta have a tail lamp.